Welcome, everyone. I'm Councilmember Goodman, and I call the October 26 Council Study Session to Order. Due to the Governor's proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general comment, a public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can also make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. I will also ask the Council, Council President Hunt, to share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda item. Items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comment. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I will wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them very seriously, and we factor them into the decisions that we make. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently, limit comments to five minutes, remute your microphone when done. If you do not respond, after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection to is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able to. Personal attacks, personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, can you identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, the first person who has signed up is Deepa Sevarahan. Deepa, in just a moment, I'll move you up as a panelist. You should then see the option to unmute and turn your video on. Also, you can let us know if you'd like to make your comments now at the beginning of the meeting or after the agenda item that you're speaking to.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not sure what's happening with my video. I, yeah, I would like to make my comments now. My name is Deepa Sevarajan. I live in Seattle, but I am the Washington Policy Manager at Climate Solutions, which is a nonprofit focused on accelerating clean energy solutions to the climate crisis. I wanted to be here today to make some comments on Isakua's legislative agenda. We've been really happy to work with the city in the past on a legislative agenda that includes climate priorities for the legislative session and wanted to just make a few remarks. So first of all, we appreciate the focus on transportation and wanted to make some suggestions on how to ensure that the transportation priorities of the council also include decarbonization. Research from Climate Solutions shows that the best way to decarbonize our transportation, which is the biggest sector of emissions in Washington, greenhouse gas emissions, requires both electrification of nearly all vehicles on the road and reducing the need for personal vehicles through transit expansion, efficient land use policy, safe bicycle and pedestrian networks, and more. The climate agenda for the 2022 session will set Washington on a path to achieving this future by building on the success of the Clean Fuel Standard that was passed this year. Washington State must fund these, must adequately fund these clean transportation options, including transit, but is short on funding. Revenue from the Climate Commitment Act, also passed this year, will support transit, but it doesn't meet the level of investment that we need. The legislature should pursue new sources of transportation revenue that are progressive, climate-forward, and flexible in how they can be spent. Those investments should prioritize multimodal solutions, heavy-duty vehicle electrification, and electrification options for low-income communities. Isakua could advocate for progressive revenue options, such as an air quality surcharge, which would be a one-time charge on the sale of new vehicles and on the remaining life of a vehicle being re-titled in Washington for the first time. Other revenue options that are also progressive could include a luxury transportation tax, a well-designed road uses charge, and expanding revenue collection options for local governments. In addition to transportation, other climate priorities that we would love to see the city of Isakua lift up could include supporting an update to the state's Growth Management Act to address climate change, ensuring that our long-range planning need leads to reduced climate pollution, more resilient communities, and adequate affordable housing. This must happen soon, in the 2022 legislative session, before cities and counties embark on updating their next comprehensive plan. Additionally, we would encourage Isakua to support a buy-clean, buy-fair policy for the state of Washington. Buy-clean policies, such as the policy passed in California in 2017, mandate that greenhouse gas emissions from certain materials be documented and considered when contracting for state-funded infrastructure projects. Adding a buy-fair element requires contractors and subcontractors to also report on domestic labor law compliance in the countries where they produce goods and services, incentivizing clean and fair manufacturing. In 2022, advocates will prioritize a bill that requires disclosure of embodied carbon, that is, the carbon associated with a product's manufacture, and labor practices to help the state understand its procurement practices and consider procurement requirements in future sessions. Thank you for Isakua's history of strong legislative work, and I hope that you will consider including these climate priorities in your legislative agenda for the 2022 session.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak tonight?
Yes. Next, we have Debbie Berto. Debbie, in just a moment, I'll move you up as a panelist. You'll have the option to unmute and maybe turn your video on. You have the floor, Debbie.
Thank you. Couldn't figure that out. Okay. I am Debbie Berto, and I live just outside the city limits. I am here as a board member from Friends of Lake Smamish State Park. You may not be aware that amazing FLISP, as our acronym is, FLISP volunteers have developed a comprehensive trails plan for the park that will be implemented in phases, opening trails to all people of all abilities. The park's flat terrain makes it a natural for ADA trails. Earlier this year, when the Washington State Legislature finalized its capital budget, Lake Smamish State Park was granted nearly $3 million to begin the trail improvements. The first grant was applied for by our group. We applied for a $252,000 grant for a crosswalk for safety reasons across the entry road that connects the picnic trails and an extension of the kitchen shelter trail to the orchard loop trail. This section of ADA trail improvements is especially critical for access to the soccer fields. But here's the catch. Our Friends group agreed to raise an additional $82,000 of the cost. But Phase 1 cannot proceed until our matching money is turned into the state. Currently, we've raised about half of it. But at the same time, Washington State Park supplied for and received a much larger grant, $2.6 million, to build a new pedestrian bridge over Isakua Creek within the park, along with extensive trail improvements beginning at the lake. This is a much more complicated project with ecological design and permitting needed, of course. To show community support, our group agreed to raise $110,000 for this project. Again, the project cannot proceed until we turn in our pledged amount. The trails plan is magnificent, all done by volunteers. It's amazing. It will decommission some current paths created by hikers that are in environmentally sensitive areas, particularly along the creek. It will create those accessible trails to accommodate all abilities, create a larger loop trail that connects into the picnic areas, and ensure better connectivity to existing trails outside of the park. Some of those future trail connectors will link to the boat launch within the park, the current Microsoft campus, the East Lake Smamish Trail that, as you know, in the city of Isakua does not really have a trailhead, and to City of Isakua Trails. We've requested the city of Isakua contribute $30,000 to help our nonprofit reach its goal of raising $200,000 in matching funds for these two grants. We understand that Mayor Polly, thank you, Mayor Polly, has included it in her budget, but since the council has the last word, we're also asking for your support. Now, if you would like to do more, that amount could be larger, reducing our need to come back next year for additional support. I want to thank you for your consideration of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Debbie. We don't do a Q and A, but I really appreciate you showing up and filling us in.
You bet.
Clerk, do we have anybody else sign up to speak?
We don't have anyone else who's signed up, but I do see a few other members of the public in the meeting. So if anyone else would like to make public comments at this time, please raise your virtual hand, or if you're on the phone, please press star three. And I'll just monitor the attendee list for a moment here. All right. And I'm not seeing anyone indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So at this time, I would ask if President, Council President Hunt would summarize the email comments that we received, please?
Thank you. We did receive one email comment specific to ID 0950, the 2022 legislative agenda. And while we've been having virtual meetings, I am summarizing email comments that we receive on items that we are discussing. And this comment had many, many items of feedback on different items, both in our policy manual as well as our priorities for the next legislative session. For a few examples of the feedback, for widening of Highway 18, this resident asked if there would be other things we can also do to prevent pain points caused by pass-through traffic other than the widening of Highway 18. And then also comments on multiple items in the legislative policy manual, including would like to see a statewide fire protection plan for forested communities and multiple other comments. And that concludes comments that we received on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. So now it's time to move on to our next agenda item, and that is ID 0950, 2022 Legislative Agenda, presented by Jean Paul, the city's management analyst. And along with us tonight, here is Shelley Helder, lobbyist. I did want to say in advance, because there have been a few emails out late today about amendments, just to make it clear that, and city administrator Bob Kowitz can jump in if I'm incorrect here. But my understanding is that we are here to talk about the proposed legislative agenda that will come to a regular council meeting for adoption. And tonight is for information and, and feedback. And then, and certainly, proposed changes will be discussed tonight, and everybody can comment on those. And then the administration, if hearing a sufficient number of voices in favor of a change would make a change in the legislative agenda, and if the legislative agenda is not how, not exactly how any council member would like it, then council members at the regular meeting can actually propose, formally propose amendments. So unless I'm wrong, city clerk or administrative Bob Kowitz, I just wanted to make it clear that we are not taking action on it tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Goodman, members of the council. That's absolutely correct. There are lots of changes floating around. I think certainly we'd like to try to get some general concurrence this evening so that the document you see in a couple of weeks is nearly final. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Jean Paul, you're up.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman, and good evening, members of the council. I'm Jean Paul, the management analyst in the executive office, and Shelley Helder, our senior governmental affairs consultant. Gordon Thomas Honeywell is also with us this evening, and together we'll be presenting on the state legislative agenda for 2022. There are two primary reasons for this presentation tonight. First, we'd like to provide information, and this will include an overview of both the 2021 and the 2022 legislative sessions and the development of the proposed agenda. The second reason for the presentation is to seek your feedback on the proposed agenda. And now I'm going to turn it over to Shelley, who'll begin with the outcomes of the previous session.
Good evening, council. Thanks for the time tonight. So since the legislative process is a two-year cycle, I think it's always good to remember what occurred in the first year of the biennium before we start talking about the next year of the biennium. So in 2021, we made substantial progress in advancing the city's legislative priorities, and we did that in coordination with the city's legislators from the 5th and the 41st districts. We were successful in getting $500 million toward the widening of Highway 18, included in both the House and the Senate proposed packages, and as well as $3.4 million for the I-90 over-under crossing, included in the Senate proposal. While neither, well, while a transportation revenue package was not ultimately adopted, and definitely more work remains on the topic, our work this last session positioned the city well moving forward. So it, it was important progress. And another item was that the city was a key partner in advocating for capital budget appropriations for the Isakua Food and Clothing Bank expansion. And so the food bank was allocated $1 million toward that project. And then finally, we were successful in restoring streamlined sales tax mitigation payments, which will now continue until 2026. And that was a fairly significant redirection of the decision that the legislature had made in the prior year. So suffice to say, the, the virtual nature of the legislative session did not impact the city's ability to advance your priorities. Next slide. So as we turn to 2022, we're looking at the second year of the biennium, which means it's going to be a short 60-day session. The budget cycle aligns with the legislative cycle. So we're, the legislature will not be adopting new budgets. They'll be focused on supplemental budgets that make amendments to the budgets they adopted in 2021. In the operating budget, they left with a fairly healthy reserve, and the most recent revenue forecasts showed that revenues are forecasted to increase. So we're expecting some additional expenditures out of the operating budget. The capital budget, the primary way to pay for the capital budget is through a sale of bonds. Bonds are only issued once a biennium, and they're issued in the first year of the biennium. So the remaining funding is about $80 million. So that's the size that we're looking to see from a supplemental capital budget. And that is a relatively small capital or supplemental capital budget. So that means that projects funded through the supplemental budget this year are likely to be smaller. Budget writers tend to prioritize projects that have some type of emergency component to them, projects that can't wait till the new year of the budget cycle. And they do, they do tend to favor communities that didn't receive any funding in the first year of the biennium. Finally, the transportation budget is the most constrained of the three, just in terms of funding availability. However, there are active conversations around a transportation revenue package, which we'll mention here in a moment. In addition to working on the budgets, the legislature will be considering policy bills in 2022. Any legislation that was introduced in the first year and did not pass, did not pass into law, carries over and will be considered in 2022. And then legislators will, will introduce new bills as well. The format of the 2022 session is still up in the air. It's unclear if it's going to be virtual again. It's looking more like that every day. We have heard possibility of a hybrid, where legislators would be in person, but members of the public and lobbyists would be virtual. I think at this point, the decision has not been made. So it's, it's still unknown. The legislature does convene for what's called Committee Assembly Days every November, and this November, they are going to convene in a virtual environment again. Next slide. There are some things that stay the same between year one and year two of the biennium. The majorities don't change, so Democrats will continue to hold the majority in both chambers. And generally, committee assignments don't change. I think the exception to that is if there are any retirements, which there have been a few retirements announced in the Senate. So we may see some moving of chairs and committee assignments in the Senate. Following the 2022 legislative session, there will be elections in November of 2022, and all the members of the House and half the members of the Senate will be up for reelection. But before that happens, though, the State Redistricting Commission will release their final map, expected to be released here on November 15. So legislators are going to go into the 2022 session knowing what their new district boundaries are, but still representing their current districts. Next slide. So there are just a handful of items that I anticipate will be kind of hot topics this upcoming session. And of course, a transportation revenue package, and that's because there are negotiations occurring right now on a package. And the hope was to be able to find common ground by the first week of November, so that a special session could be convened in mid-November. And that does know a lot, doesn't seem possible. I think just today, there was kind of a recognition that that's not going to happen. So a special session is not going to be convened for our transportation package. But the conversations are continuing, and the negotiators at this point include a small group of transportation leaders from the House and Senate Democrat caucuses. And they've been meeting twice a week. They began focus, they began the conversations focusing on revenue. Last I heard, they had reached some type of consensus on revenue, and it had moved on to talking about how to allocate the investments, so how to spend the new revenue. I have heard some distinctions between how the House and the Senate are proposing the spending. On the House side, there seems to be interest in allocating more money to grant programs, programs like the Transportation Improvement Board or Safe Routes to Schools or Complete Streets. And on the Senate side, they're wanting to take a more traditional approach, which is to create a list of specific projects around the state that are high-need projects and fund those projects specifically. I anticipate that the final agreement will be some type of compromise between the two. And I do think that negotiations are going to continue into the 2022 session. The next issue that's likely to be discussed is around public safety and police reform. The legislature enacted over a dozen public safety bills in 2021, and those bills have created some confusion around interpretation, resulting in some inconsistent application throughout the state. The House Public Safety Members, specifically Chair Roger Goodman and Representative Jesse Johnson, convened a stakeholder meeting just yesterday to work through a very specific list of issues that they're hoping to clarify in this coming session. And I'm going to mention just two of them for your awareness. The first is to clarify the use of force, which would be subject to reasonable care in specific circumstances. And some of those circumstances are behavioral health interventions when you're assisting fire or EMS, child protective custody cases or court orders, essentially use of force when community caretaking is, is needed. The other clarification that they're working on is to make it clear that all less-than-lethal alternatives are acceptable. There are some varying interpretations of laws that passed last year. The, the goal is to focus on truly clarification of legislative intent, not rehashing policy decisions that were made. The, the next policy item to highlight is continued discussion around the Blake Supreme Court decision and the legislature's response to it. So as of, as of now, so current law is possession of a controlled substance is a misdemeanor rather than a felony, which was the case prior to the Blake decision. As a result of the legislature's actions, there are requirements for diversion to treatment before the prosecution for that misdemeanor can take place. So the legislature is not likely to revisit that policy decision regarding a misdemeanor or felony, but they are likely to discuss enhancements to treatment options, funding for jails to administer medication-assisted treatment, or perhaps funding for municipal courts due to an increase in, in workload. And then finally, we're expecting a few different items that made significant progress in 2021 related to the Growth Management Act. There were several bills that made it just barely across the finish line, so we expect those to come back. The legislature directed a work group to make recommendations to them for the specific changes that need to be made to the Growth Management Act. And that work group will be, their results will be ready for the 2022 session. The last thing that I'll mention regarding the Growth Management Act is we are expecting legislators to bring forward proposals that would preempt local control on land use zoning. It's something that has continued to be introduced for the last several years. And I expect an increased momentum for these types of policies because it's, it's no longer simply a shortage of housing that's driving the discussion. It's also the fact that some zoning decisions were rooted in systemic racism and resulted in inequities that have continued to today. So I think I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Those are kind of the, the topics that we're anticipating will be really relevant for local governments coming up in this next session. Next slide.
Shelley, can I ask a question, please?
Of course, yeah.
The last comment that you made about Growth Management Act and the possibility of changes in local control and what those concerns are based in, it would be helpful when this comes back to us that we have a little bit more information about what specifically, I, I don't have any idea what specific zoning decisions were made that are causing the concern. So I would be interested in having more information.
Sure, I can definitely share that. So next, I'd like to review the city's draft legislative priorities. And again, since this is the second year of the biennium, we're, we're making updates to the city's existing legislative agenda. So we are proposing removing the items that have been accomplished, which are, of course, the food bank request and a statement regarding fiscal sustainability, which specifically referenced the streamlined sales tax mitigation payments. And I'll, I'll just kind of preemptively address a potential question of why we're not recommending adding a new priority to the list. And the city has been incredibly successful in securing funding from the state for local projects, and we're still in the process of using funding that was previously awarded. So since this is a supplemental budget year and the capital budget will be limited, we are recommending waiting until the new biennium to advance a new funding request if one is ready in the new, the new year. With that said, the two priorities are on the screen in front of you. First is to continue working with the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition to advocate for the widening of Highway 18. And the second is a $3.4 million request to begin the pre-design and environmental documentation for the I-90 over-under crossing. Both are transportation-related, which again is, is relevant because negotiations- because negotiations about a, around a transportation package are ongoing. And traditionally, it would be unlikely that a revenue package would be considered in an election year, which is what 2022 is for majority of legislators. But there is so much pent-up demand for transportation investments that the conventional wisdom in this case may not, may not apply. So I, I guess the more I am talking with legislators and the more I'm hearing, now that there's a little bit more certainty that there won't be a special session, people are preparing for 2022 to potentially be the time to pass a transportation package. And I think whether, whether a package is passed or not in 2022, the, the conversations are going to continue. And so we increase our likelihood of being included in that final package by remaining consistent with our requests and with our messaging. And then I think having, having a legislative agenda that's focused exclusively on transportation just sends a really strong message to the legislature that this is that high of a priority for the city. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jean-Paul to review the proposed changes to the city's policy manual.
Thank you, Shelley. The second part of the legislative agenda is the policy manual, and this is the document that details the city's positions for the full spectrum of issues that may arise during the legislative session. While the majority of the manual remains the same, the administration has proposed both removing items that were accomplished in 2021 and adding statements for continuing issues. Items that have been removed or updated because of the 2021 session include advocating for the return of streamlined sales tax, or SST mitigation, increasing the flexibility of the multifamily tax exemption, or MFTE, protecting pension contributions from the impacts of COVID-related furloughs, advocating for the authorization of tax increment financing, or TIF, and the Arts Washington Creative District's capital funding request. Items that have been added because of the 2021 legislation include support for a clarification on police reform policies to ensure community safety and consistent statewide implementation, support for cities to receive funding for diversion-related activities in response to the Blake decision and associated legislation, and support for increased flexibility for virtual public meetings during emergencies. In terms of timing and next steps, the administration will incorporate your feedback from tonight in return for approval of the legislative agenda at the November 15th council meeting. Final details for the breakfast meeting with our legislators are still being determined, but it will likely occur in early December as it has in previous years. And finally, the legislative session begins on January 10th, 2022. That concludes our presentation, and following any questions, we're seeking your feedback. In terms of direction for the administration, there are two questions we would like to have answered tonight. The first question is, are the priorities that we have identified clear and correct? And the second is, are there other positions you would like to add to the policy manual? So with that, Shelley and I are ready for any questions.
Thanks, both of you. That was a great presentation, very, very clear. I appreciate that. Any questions from councilmembers? No? Question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Shelley. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about the GMA, what you think is going on in that area? And one of the things I'm particularly interested in is anything related to schools and school siting. That's certainly been something that's an issue for us in Issaquah, since only a small portion of the school district is in, inside the boundaries. And so I'm wondering if there's any action on that, or if us taking a position on that would have any impact on any of the proposed legislation.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think a, a lot of the discussion around the GMA has been around how to, how to incorporate climate, I guess, kind of along the lines of what the, the public comment from earlier this evening, making sure that as cities and counties are planning that they're mindful of the impacts that these decisions are having on the, on the climate. So that's been a one large component of the GMA conversation. I, I think school siting has come up in the past. I have not heard it recently in terms of what the proposed amendments are to the GMA. But it's, it's likely that it's because I, I don't run in the circles with other school district or, or school district lobbyists. So it's very possible that that's part of the proposed changes. And I'm happy to look into it further, but I, I have not heard about it in terms of the changes that I'm hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Not seeing any. We'll wait for a second. Otherwise, we'll go to opportunity for public comment. I guess this is the time when folks who are listening in, if they want to make public comment, they can signify by raising their hand.
Chair Goodman, this is Tissa. I'm monitoring the attendee list. As you said, anyone who'd like to make comments now, you can raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer, look for the small hand icon, or you can send me the host a chat. Taking a minute to monitor this list. I don't see anyone indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. So while we carry on here, if you do see anybody, then before we move on to the next agenda item, I think we can accommodate that public comment. So the direction needed tonight is whether we think the priorities are clear and correct, and if there are other policy positions to add to the policy manual. So now is the time to provide that feedback. Who'd like to go first? Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I do have some comments. I also wanted to add that we did have one additional emailed comment on this. Unfortunately, it went to my junk mail, but I did just find it. And so this is another comment on this item that we received by email. And this resident supported the first policy in our policy manual regarding the Growth Management Act, which is to oppose amendments that weaken or undermine the statute. And then advocated that we take a neutral stance towards two additional policies, which were Issaquah supports tools that incentivize but do not mandate cities within the urban growth boundary to increase their density, and then also urged that we adopt a stance of neutrality to Issaquah adopts, Issaquah opposes statewide approaches to land use decisions that should be made at the local level, such as the planning and zoning of accessory dwelling units. So that was an additional comment that we received by email. And then I, I do have, I make my comments as well right now, if that's okay. So the first thing is, I think the high-level priorities are, are correct. I do think that we've had a, a history of the widening of State Route 18 has, has been in both packages, the House and the Senate. And so that one seems that there's a lot of support for that. The I-90 over-under crossing is more specific and a more specific need for Issaquah. And so to the extent that we can prioritize heightening awareness about that issue, I think that, that would be important for us. Because Highway 18, State Route 18 affects lots of communities. There are lots of people, I think, advocating for that one. It is very important to us. But in contrast, the over-under crossing is something that's specifically really important for, for Issaquah. And so I would, I would maybe stress that one more to bring more attention to it. But I do think both of those are, are priorities, and they have been our priory, priorities for a while now. In terms of the other, in terms of the policy manual, I also like, like the resident who emailed us about this opposing a statewide approach to land use decisions that should be made at the local level, such as planning and zoning of accessory dwelling units. I think we recognize that there is a dire need for more housing, more housing of small unit types. We have, as a city, adopted policies to make it easier for folks to build ADUs. Recently, I was in the Conference for American Planning Professionals, and they were talking about how, you know, for housing, if you have policies that are the same across an area such as the state, that can really make it easier to build more housing of these types that are in need. So I think, given the need for housing in the state, given the affordability issues associated with that need, and also given that this specifically calls out ADUs, which the city has been very supportive of, I would propose changing that item. And I, I sent this by email, but I'll just read it as well. So I would propose changing the policy that says Issaquah opposes statewide approaches to land use decisions that should be made at the local level, such as planning and zoning of accessory dwelling units, ADUs. I would propose that we change that to Issaquah will monitor land use decisions that affect our Title 18 Municipal Land Use Code update. We are currently working on Title 18. I think there are, there are things that affect that, and that seems more relevant to, to us. Would be important for us to, to monitor, but I think not necessarily to oppose anything that would be in that area. And then I have two other ones that are much more two other proposed changes that basically combine things that were extremely similar, that had their own bullets. And actually, one of them regarding PFOS, there was an act, there was one policy that didn't have an action associated. So that action would be to monitor. So I think those are, those are more just combining like things into, in those two cases. And lastly, I, you know, based on the comments that we heard earlier from DIPA, from Climate Solutions, and also on our history of advocacy for climate and working on the Climate Action Plan and everything else, I do think it would be good to support the inclusion of the climate provisions into the Growth Management Act. And specifically, I know there's one HB 1099 that is, that will impact cities, but I, and I think that it's the right way to go, so I would propose adding that one. That's it, thanks.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. So overall, I, I think the legislative priorities look very good. I, I liked many of the, the additions and rewording that was provided. So overall, I'm happy with what was presented. I would like to join Councilmember Walsh with interest in seeing if we could carve out a statement about school sightings, and perhaps we could do that by working with our local school district to see if there is some wording that we could all agree upon as a council to add. Because the impact of those school sighting decisions on the city of Issaquah could be very impactful if we don't get this resolved in, in terms of how are we going to provide schools for the students who live within our city boundaries. So if we could do some research on that and perhaps have a, a statement come back to us that we could push against and talk about, I would, I would like to see that happen. I second a lot of Council President Hunt's comments as well. And then I did have one item that I would like to propose to add. And this would be in the section, let me get my notes here, an amendment to the Affordable Housing Health Human Services and Homelessness section, and I'm suggesting that we add wording to the effect that Issaquah supports allocation of unanticipated marijuana revenues to youth substance abuse prevention and treatment programs to meet the behavioral health impacts of COVID-19. Councilmember Goodman, is it appropriate for me to talk to, talk to this suggestion at this point?
Sure, I, absolutely. But we don't have a, it's kind of a long statement, and so we don't have any text of it up there, so it would be nice to look at it, but absolutely speak to it.
Let's see, I'm seeking, I did send that ahead to Clerk to Geezer, and so maybe she can put it up for everybody to read, or I can maybe cut and paste.
This is Tissa. I'm happy to add it to the chat, or I could share my screen. The chat sufficient?
Sure, thank you. You want to speak to it? Councilmember DeMichele?
Sure, I'll go ahead. So why would I like to have this wording added? "Schools and others have documented an unprecedented increase in youth mental health and substance abuse disorders as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the quarantine, and the isolation of the past year." "In Washington, we do have a revenue source that supports youth substance abuse prevention, treatment, and recovery services statewide, and that is the marijuana tax revenue. Marijuana revenues have been steadily increasing since legalization. And according to a February article in Crosscut Magazine, marijuana revenues constitute 2% of the state's revenues, or a little over $1 billion in revenues for this biennium. Of that amount, a little over $22 million is allocated specifically for education and prevention aimed at use. In short, about 2% of the marijuana revenues represent the state's commitment to early prevention of drug abuse." "As we heard on October 4th from Noah Nost, Chair of Influence of Choice, tech committee, preventing substance use, especially among young people, is the most effective way, both economically, legally, and societally, that we can reduce addiction rates in our community for all ages. In addition, treatment provided to young users results in the greatest long-term and lifetime increases in recovery from addiction. I would therefore urge the Issaquah City Council to support the addition of this language to say that we support legislative actions that allocate any new or unanticipated marijuana revenue funds to youth substance abuse prevention and treatment services, and to add that to our legislative priorities." And those are my comments.
Thank you. We will move to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So in speaking to the concept that I asked the question about related to the Growth Management Act and the urban growth boundaries related to schools, I feel like we could easily update the first bullet point in the Land Use Growth Management Act Housing Section, which currently says Issaquah is supportive of the Growth Management Act in general, and would generally oppose amendments to the GMA that weaken or undermine the statute, except as it relates to school siting. I think we could add that portion. Just like the next statement says, Issaquah supports the current urban growth boundary or urban growth area boundary, and would oppose any efforts to move it or additional growth that is not connected to transportation funding. So I think in both of those statements, we could carve out exceptions that we feel are important to our residents and the local school district. But I would love to hear from other members of the council on your opinions on that. And then as to what Council President Hunt was speaking to, I do agree generally that changing our policy manual from opposed to monitor, or yeah, opposed to monitor legislation about the statewide approach to land use and zoning as it relates to our code updates would be a good plan, I think. You know, from my standpoint, yes, a statewide change, or, you know, allowance for additional density or ADUs, or something like that, does potentially have an impact on Issaquah. I think the bigger impact is on bigger cities, which are currently, have much of their land zoned for single use or single land zoned for single use or single family zoning. And that's where we're going to see the most impact from a statewide, um, situation, which will, or from a regional, um, situation as well, which will also, um, impact our residents as far as, um, housing costs. So those would be kind of my two suggested areas of modification or adjustment. But I mean, gosh, looking at this as a five-page document for the policy manual and having two minor tweaks. I really do want to say, both Shelley and Jean, you guys just always come at it with excellent work. I love, um, the information that you provide to us. So, uh, don't let a few adjustments suggest that there isn't much appreciation for all that you do. So, thank you.
Councilmember Mart?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Uh, first off, I just want to say I really like Councilmember De Michelle's proposed policy language on, uh, excess marijuana tax revenues or newfound marijuana tax revenues. Um, it is an ongoing challenge that we don't treat marijuana tax revenues the way we treat alcohol tax revenues in terms of, um, having more say in where it goes. And this really dovetails or points into my, my other point, which is, uh, I like the language, uh, Issaquah opposes statewide approaches to land use decisions that should be made at the local level, such as planning and zoning of accessory dwelling units. Um, this is a bedrock issue for King County cities. It's enshrined in the FCA's legislative policy. Um, you know, the easiest thing to do when you are a state legislator is telling all those pesky cities what they should do, because it doesn't cost you any money. And you can, you can say, voila, we've solved the problem, um, by telling those cities what to do. I feel that, uh, Issaquah for the last, for as long as I've been here in the city, we have taken more than our fair share of growth. Uh, we've done it in ways trying to promote, uh, workforce housing and living wage jobs. And I don't particularly feel that I need to hear from the legislature on how we should be doing it differently. Um, I think we've done a great job. And so, um, but, you know, the legislature just often, so often in the last 12 years, I've seen them make decisions and tell cities what to do and not provide us any money to implement the things that they want us to do. And that's, that's part of the challenge. And I get that there's problems to solve, but I think that some of our cities have done a incredibly thoughtful job in trying to address these issues. And, you know, I'm very proud of our accessory dwelling unit policy. And, uh, I don't want to see it superseded by something coming out of Olympia. And, uh, more broadly, I think every city in King County, uh, wants to retain its authority, uh, to set policy to the extent that it has it today. So I would like to keep that language. I think it's powerful. I think it empowers, uh, our lobbyists in the legislature, and I would not want to cut it out. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall or Deputy Counsel, President Ray? I'll go last. Not me. Says the Councilmember Ray or Little Red Hen.
Councilmember Goodman, this is Councilmember Hall. Just quickly saying as a reminder, for the record, that as an employee of the legislature, I've been advised not to contribute to conversations or vote on a final legislative agenda as much as I wish I could. Um, so I am enjoying the conversation though. Thank you all.
Great. Great. Thank you. Um, well, not great, but thank you for reminding us.
I have a couple of comments, like Councilmember Mart's. Um, I am, uh, will not support, um, changing from opposes to monitor regarding the, um, land use decisions. I think that, um, we should, at the, to the greatest extent possible, preserve, um, local land use and zoning decisions with municipalities. We're not all created the same. We're not created all the same across the state. We're not even all created the same, um, in the western half or even in the eastern half. And, um, I do not want to see us put forth languages that it's a sort of, okay, well, we'll watch it. No, I think we need to have strong language. I think we need to retain local control. And, um, I would not like to see, um, any erosion of, um, either that local control or our attitude toward preserving it. So I would not be in favor of that. The, um, I'm not sure that I understand the, um, Councilmember Walsh's, um, carve out, um, that she mentioned about accept us to school citing. So I think if, if we can bring back some more information on that, if you hear a, um, a sufficient number of council members tonight that want that change, then I would be interested in knowing exactly, um, what that means, because I don't understand what, what it would mean. The the climate, um, the mention of climate and adding it to the GMA. I can't remember if somebody said we should support it or we should, we should monitor it. I'm not sure how I feel about that, and I kind of lost my train. I thought I was going to say, but I will get to the one that, um, that Councilmember De Michelle, um, suggested. And I would support that language if it was made clear that this is what we support the state doing with its excess revenues. I would not support it if it could be interpreted, or if it's not clear, that the city would take any of its excess revenue and use it for treatment here, because we are not in that business. So I, if that distinction is made, that we would support the state using that money for that, I would be in support of that. Um, do we have any other comments or questions? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. So I was the one who, uh, proposed supporting, um, and so it was to support the inclusion of the climate provisions in the Growth Management Act. And that would be a new bullet. And the, the, um, bill that I know got, uh, didn't pass last time, but I think would be back in a similar form that I referenced before was HB 1099. And that's the one that, um, specifically is talking about cities and cities planning for climate resiliency. Um, and I, I think we should support it, and I think we have, um, a lot of other sort of climates-aligned, uh, policies. And we're considering climate as we're going through Title 18. So I think it dovetails well with all of that.
Uh, great. Thank you very much for that clarification. And so I was going to, uh, finish my thought and respond to that, but I will let Councilmember De Michelle go ahead, unless you want me to finish with the climate comment that I had before.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Okay. So I think if I knew, um, I, I'm a little bit concerned about just this general support. I'd like to know what the, um, what the consequences are, rather than just a general support. I don't have any idea what HB 1099 says. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I just need to know, I just need to know more. Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle?
Uh, just very briefly, um, I just want to say I agree with Councilmember Goodman's suggested additions to the wording on marijuana revenues. Thanks.
Okay. I'm looking at the chat and I don't see any other comments right now. Jean, Shelley, do you have what you need from the council?
Yes, and if it would be helpful, I can try and summarize the feedback just to make sure I've captured it all accurately.
Sure. Go ahead.
So I, uh, two items where we owe more information is just the specifics on zoning and how that might be an issue or have caused concern. And then potentially looking into the GMA question and how it's related to schools and school sightings before we move forward with a, a statement on that. In terms of policy, uh, manual updates, Councilmember De Michelle's, uh, support position for the marijuana revenues with the clarification that Councilmember Goodman made, from Council President Hunt, uh, combination of the, the two bullets under the environment and the combination of the two bullets under the PFAS. There was a suggestion about the opposition to statewide approaches, but it sounds like there's, um, kind of mixed feedback from the council on that. So no clear direction on, on that statement. As well as the, uh, support inclusion for climate provisions in the GMA, may need some more information before adding that one, uh, to the, uh, policy manual. There were a couple of comments from Councilmember Walsh about the, the GMA and, uh, how it relates to school sightings. So we'll, uh, clarify that information and come back with a statement if it's appropriate. And, uh, Councilmember Martz and Councilmember Goodman just summarized, they liked the opposed statement for statewide mandates. And I think that is all the comments. Not sure if anybody had something that I missed, but that's all of my notes.
Council President Hunt?
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to, um, make a comment on one thing that I didn't, um, didn't say yet, which is, I think in terms of the school, I, I'm open to a school citing, um, statement as well. I think like Councilmember Goodman on the earlier one, I would just need more information. I don't quite understand what we're, um, what we would be saying in that. But I do think it should be separate from the currently strong statement that says we basically support the Growth Management Act and don't support weakening it. I wouldn't, I, I think that that probably should just stand alone. And then the school citing one can be its own thing. Also because, um, and I think it gives us a clear, like, that, that one about the Growth Management Act will always just sort of stand alone in our policy manual. And then these other things may come and go as, as, um, policies come up and policies are adopted. So I think because it's separate enough and, um, and the Growth Management Act is super important, um, my, my pretty strong preference would be to have it separate and not just merged into the, uh, first Growth Management Bullet.
Thank you. Anything else on this item? Jean, Shelley, nothing else? Well, thank you very much. Um, really appreciate all the work that's been done on this. And you heard from several council members, um, they seem generally very pleased. And, uh, we will take up this topic again at one of our, our upcoming regular meetings and probably see you both again. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, ID 0925, Proposed 2022 Budget Deliberations. And this will be presented by Autumn Monahan, Interim Finance Director, and Susie Monsell, Acting Budget Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman and members of the council. I'll just pause a moment while we share our screen. Oh, Susie, you're on, we can't hear you. I'm hoping she's able to share. Apologies, one sec, let me get the presentation up.
Autumn, this is Tisha. I'm also happy to share my screen if that's helpful.
Oh, that would be, thank you, Tisha. I was just going to download it.
Um, and can folks hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, and I apologize for that. I can actually, um, also share. That would be easier. Whatever, whatever works.
We can get started. Uh, so for the next slide, uh, just quickly, uh, I read, well, again, my name's Autumn Monahan. I'm the, um, interim finance director. Apologies for that delay. Uh, we're here tonight for the second city council, uh, meeting on deliberations for the proposed 2022 budget. Uh, our agenda tonight includes some updates and additional feedback on two areas. One is we have an updated revenue forecast for you tonight, as well as the story of ending sun melons and how did we get here with that one-time investment fund and the additional dollars? And then we also have some policy, uh, questions for consideration as well tonight. Uh, and these are the four questions. How should we approach CPD fees given the decrease in cost recovery rate proposed? Does the council support the proposed fleet fund true-up? How should we approach funds partisan by the pandemic, including arts? Do we make them whole or weighted out? How should, uh, the one-time investment fund be allocated and then any other feedback the council may have? And so our budget schedule, next slide please. Uh, so tonight, uh, we are in budget deliberations. I will be back on November 1st during our council meeting for, uh, revenue adoption, including the property tax levy. We have an additional meeting on November 9th scheduled for final budget deliberations if needed, um, with, uh, adoption slated for November 15th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Susie Monsell, our Acting Budget Manager, to present on our first few items.
Great. Thank you, Autumn, and apologies again for my technical difficulties. Um, so, uh, I'm here to kick us off with the updated revenue forecast. Um, so given the inherent volatility of forecasting revenues in a pandemic, uh, we reran the general fund revenue forecast for the big four revenues. So that includes sales tax, property tax, business and occupation tax, and utility tax. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so following the same methodology as our August forecast, but with several more months of data, we found that the sales tax forecast from August is largely holding. Uh, we recommended holding the, uh, 21 forecast and the amount, uh, included for the 22 proposed budget to what was proposed. Uh, and at this point, there are just too many unknowns to suggest that we increase it or decrease it based on the numbers that we've seen from the last few months for our sales tax. Uh, property tax is largely set by the county assessor's office for the year. So we have no reason to expect, uh, that to change for 2021. Uh, for 2022, the estimates that we've received so far from the assessor's office are very close to the amount that was estimated, uh, in August, within about $15,000 out of $10 million. Um, so we see, uh, no reason at this point to adjust the, the 21 forecast or 22 proposed budget for property tax. Business and occupation tax, however, uh, looks like it will exceed the August forecast by about $125,000 each in 2021 and in 2022. And it appears the August forecast was a bit more conservative than the last few months of data have indicated. So we would recommend increasing, uh, 2021, the forecast and the 2022, uh, estimated revenue, um, each by $125,000 for, um, BNO tax. Uh, similar to sales tax, utility tax appears to be largely holding to the August forecast. But that said, the August forecast didn't take into account the utility rate increase previously approved, uh, for 2022 in the 2020 to 2025 utility rate study. Um, so when the rates go up, so does the tax that's charged on that rate. So, uh, the estimate for the increased utility tax resulting from the rate increases is about $50,000 for 2022. Besides the big four revenues, there were a couple of other items we wanted to flag as part of this mid-process revenue adjustment. Uh, first, as the council knows, the RCO grant awarded for the Bergsma property acquisition was originally anticipated at $1.9 million, um, and instead it was fully funded at $2.7 million. Uh, so this increase will be captured as part of the updated 2021 revenue forecast. Uh, the other substantial revenue adjustment was, uh, an update to the anticipated timing of two large development projects that were originally anticipated to complete the building permit process in 2021, but are now not expected to be completed until 2022. So this shifts about $700,000 of 2021, uh, community planning and development revenue into 2022. Uh, this will affect the CPD cost recovery estimates for 2021 and 2022, and we'll touch on this a bit later in the presentation. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, there are also some 2021 expenditure forecast adjustments, as well as a couple of proposed expenditure adjustments to the 22 proposed budget. For 2021, the August forecast anticipated some east side fire and rescue vaccine and other costs to be funded out of general fund. to be funded out of general funds fund balance in 2021. Based on current conversations with EFER, they plan to apply for FEMA funding and may request a portion of Partner City ARPA dollars for these activities. But either way, this will be in 2022, not 2021, and is no longer anticipated to be from general funds fund balance. And we have also incorporated the new 2021 ARPA expenditures authorized at the October 18 City Council meeting into our 2021 forecast. For 2022, we would like to add the limited-term police communications coordinator position to the 22 proposed budget, which is approximately $123,000. And this position was approved as part of the September 7, 2021 mid-year budget adjustment, but it came too late to be included in the 22 proposed budget. So we'd like to make sure that we capture that for the final proposal before the council votes on the 15th. And as a refresher, this position is intended to help with communication and recruitment efforts to attract candidates to the city's police department. The other 2022 expenditure adjustment we'd like to propose is a reduction, approximately $95,000 for the general fund portion, to employee medical benefit costs. Based on the best information we had at the time that we finalized the proposed budget, we anticipated a 9% increase to employee medical premiums. But earlier this fall, we learned that we should only need to increase premiums by about 4%. So we'd like to capture these savings as part of the final proposed budget. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. All told, these two tables demonstrate the impact to ending general fund fund balance from these revenue and expenditure adjustments. For the top table for 2021, while the total fund balance as a percent of expenditures will remain 46%, these adjustments will take the undesignated fund balance from 29%, as was discussed at the staff presentation on September 28th, to 30%. And for 2022, the total fund balance as a percent of expenditures goes from 43% to 45%. And the undesignated fund balance goes from 19% to 21%. And we will have a proposal later in this presentation for how we can utilize this added capacity, as well as that one-time investment fund. So we will be touching back on this later in the presentation as well. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. So before we go into the policy question, we received a question from a couple of council members around how we adopted the 2021 budget with an anticipated 19% undesignated fund balance, but we're now forecasting 29%, although now 30%. And we also heard a desire to better understand ongoing versus one-time revenues. So we wanted to briefly touch on how we have this added capacity and how we got to the recommended amount of the one-time investment fund. Next slide, please. Thank you. So these estimates are the result of various stages of the budget process. So we'd like to take a very brief moment here to discuss it. The process starts in June with a revenue and very rough expenditure forecast, the purpose mainly being to get an order of magnitude of how close ongoing revenues are balanced to ongoing expenditures. As the departments complete their requests, the budget team firms up these estimates, ensuring that ongoing revenues are in fact balanced with ongoing expenditures for the proposed budget. We then examine the estimated ending fund balance for the proposed budget year to determine what additional expenditures would get that percent undesignated fund balance to between 15 to 20%. And this year, that number was approximately 1.25 million, which was the amount of the one-time investment fund that was proposed. Next slide, please. Thank you. The other piece of, piece of the puzzle is where we ended the prior year in comparison to what was forecasted at the time of last year's budget and now this year's budget. The city took a conservative approach to forecasting revenues during the pandemic, but many revenues have since overperformed above what was forecasted at the time of the 21 budget adoption, both for 2020 and 2021. The city has also received various large, unanticipated one-time funds, including CARES Act and ARPA dollars over the last year and a half. The important thing to keep in mind when considering and evaluating fund balance is that the current and future year fund balance is never static. It's based on forecasts that are in turn based on our best information at a moment in time. As we get more information and more months of actual, the forecast becomes firmer. But the unpredictability of the economic recovery out of the pandemic makes forecasting fund balance a bit more of a moving target than usual. Next slide, please. At this point, we'd like to turn to the policy questions discussed at the beginning of the presentation. And the first question here is, how should we approach community planning and development fees given the decrease in cost recovery rate proposed? Next slide. Oh, perfect. Thank you. As recommended, or as mentioned previously in the presentation, based on the new anticipated timing of two large development projects from 2021 and 2022, this table shows the impact on the estimated CPD cost recovery. The 2022 proposed budget anticipated a 93% cost recovery for 2021 and 64% in 2022. By shifting just those two large development projects, we now estimate a cost recovery of 81% in 2021 and 78% in 2022. So this really helps demonstrate how by just shifting two projects while holding expenditures constant, the cost recovery rates for each year balance out more equally. So the cost recovery target as adopted in 2020 is 80%. Based on the variability of large projects year over year, some years the city exceeds that 80% target, but other years the city will come in under the 80% target. The intent is that that 80% target is achieved when averaged annually over time, allowing for the variability each year due to those large developments. And at this point, we can pause here to take questions on this particular item, or we can continue on to the next item, the fleet fund true-up, and take questions at the end, whichever the council would prefer at this point.
Well, I would prefer to take questions now. And I have one question that's not substantive about the materials, but you, the question that you posed to the council is, how should the city approach CPD fees given the decrease in the cost recovery rate proposed? And so I'm wondering what our options are. Because, I mean, what, yeah, what are our choices?
Sure. Well, I will give a tentative answer, but I would also open it up to Autumn or, or anyone else that would like to weigh in. But I believe for this, for the 22 budget, as what is currently forecasted, that is based on the currently adopted rates. Should the council wish to make adjustments to those rates, that would be separate from this budget process. And we're happy to explore what some of those options might be. We do not have any available this evening, but we would be happy to, to discuss with the Community Planning and Development Department.
Agreed, Susie. I think this, this came up just more of a question of seeing in the proposed budget that the cost recovery was much lower than 80% and a concern around that that we've heard from a few council members. But with this new information on the revenue forecast and seeing how even just as Susie said, by changing the timing of a few projects, how that number can shift. You know, this, this isn't going to be perfect, 8% every year. It's going to have some variability. But if council is interested in looking at different ways to structure fees on a cost recovery, that's something we can look into in 2022. But I agree, Susie, it wouldn't impact this budget.
So do council members have questions about this first topic right now? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. So you said that the option here would be to change the rates, but the rates, I believe, are our best, are our best guess at what we would need a rate to be to achieve 80% cost recovery, right? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you for that question. That's correct. So the council adopted new rates, and I believe slightly adjusted rate structures last year for several of the CPD revenues. And at that time, those were adjusted to, to try and reach that 80% target on average year over year. So, and as Autumn said, I believe this question came up because there was such that, such a big difference between 21 and 2022, based on the, the proposed budget.
And then for the expenditure and revenue, is there, in this case, it was that the revenue moved from 2021 to 2022, if you can see that. So, but the expenditure presumably for that large project occurred in 20, in 2021? So I guess my, my other question for you would be, I, I understand why this would be variable, but maybe is there a way to also just convey when, when there are these large projects that skew the numbers, that, that there's an expenditure and a revenue associated in two different years? Because you almost need to just have the average over the time period of all the projects that are, that are going into this, because that's, like, our calendar doesn't match up, it sounds like, with the, the project accounting calendar, kind of. And so maybe there's a way to do that just so we can track it better. Because I don't think this is particularly anything to worry about, but it's, it's just, it just doesn't look like we achieved 80% in 2022 with the old budget because of this mismatch. So maybe it's just averaging over the years and showing that in addition to this.
Administrator Bachwitz?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember, Council President Hunt. I think Council President Hunt's on to something. I think that perhaps maybe it's a matter of changing the policy, again, not this evening, but perhaps the next time the council looks at financial policies, to talk about a rolling average. The other thing that I think will help us is going to a two-year budget. And I think once we go to a two-year budget, we'll have two years of revenues, two years of expenditures projected. I think that will even it out. But I think the reason we're here this evening talking about this, I think was that concern with that 64% dollar, 54% number in the proposed budget. And I appreciate the additional explanation from interim director Monahan and budget manager Monsell, trying to give some perspective. I don't know that we've had that conversation with the council quite the way we've just had it this evening, and I appreciate them kind of framing this issue a little bit differently. If the council's satisfied with what they see tonight, I think that's fine. And perhaps we'll just make a note the next time financial policies are talked about, especially as we gear up for a two-year budget cycle here sooner than we all imagine, that it might be a good time at that point to talk more about it.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions from other council members before we move on to the next subtopic? I'm not seeing any. So, Susie or Autumn, go right ahead. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So as, so at this point, we'd like to turn to the next policy question, which is, does the council support a proposed fleet fund true-up? So next slide, please. Thank you. The fleet fund is an internal service fund, meaning that its expenditures, which are intended to support other city functions and activities, are funded by cost allocation from the other city funds that the fleet fund is supporting. The fleet fund currently supports activities performed by general fund departments, including the Parks and Community Services Department, Community Planning and Development Executive, and the Police Department. And the fleet also supports numerous public works vehicles funded out of the Street Operating Fund, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and the Stormwater Fund. And the amount needed from these other city funds each year is determined by two cost allocation, the operating and capital. The operating costs include items such as repairs, maintenance, personnel, overhead, and fuel. Capital costs primarily include vehicle replacements and acquisitions. While the operating portion of the fleet cost allocation is intended to support the cost of that given year, the capital portion should be set at a level that builds the appropriate balance for vehicle replacements over time. So as to add some predictability to these costs, when the timing of those replacements can vary year to year. The goal of these cost allocations is to ensure the balances of each year, each fund's contributions or the colors of money within the total fleet fund's fund balance should be sufficient to support their own activities. In other words, contributions from the utility fund should not be supporting general fund activities. At the time of the 2020 budget development, the city did not have an accurate picture of these colors of money that made up the fleet fund fund balance due to past budgeting practices and limitations in the old charted accounts. It was determined at the time that it would be best to first determine the colors of money within the fleet fund fund balance before further contributions were made. As a result, the city paused contributions to the fleet fund from several city funds as part of the 2020 adopted budget. The 2021 adopted budget restored some of those paused cost allocations, but not all of them. So the table here shows which cost allocations, capital versus operating, were done by each city fund in the fleet fund, to the fleet fund from 2019 to 2021, along with the 2022 proposed budget. An X represents a full contribution to the fund, whereas an X with an asterisk represents a partial contribution. Next slide, please. Thank you. So during the 2021 proposed budget deliberation, staff committed to an analysis of fleet fund fund balance to true-up those colors of money within the fund balance, to ensure that the activity within the fund was supported by the appropriate city fund. And this analysis was completed this summer, resulting in the need for a one-time true-up of approximately $2.1 million from the general fund to support parks, police, community planning and development executive, and the streets portion of the public works fleet cost. And it's important to note that the, the proposed 2.1 million here of general fund true-up is already included in the city's fund balance assumptions for 2021. So it, as part of that 21 expenditure forecast. So this would not, this is included in what gets us to that, I believe, 21% undesignated ending fund balance in 2022. Action would still be needed in the form of a 21 budget amendment later this year, however, to formalize this true-up should the council approve. Next slide, please. To prevent the need for a true-up in the future, the city will conduct a study in 2022 to formalize a cost allocation methodology for the long term. The study will cover industry standards for vehicle life cycles, how to better align operating costs to departments, and ensure the city is following best practices. And staff is currently engaging with potential consultants on the scope of this work, which could also include future electrification or reduction of emissions, in emissions of the fleet. The project is anticipated to be covered by existing budget authority in 2021, so no additional dollars are needed for that study. But following this study, administration will return to the city council with a long-term recommendation next year. And at this point, I'm happy to pause again if there are any questions on this, this item before we move on to the next policy question.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I will echo Councilmember Goodman's question from the previous situation. What are you suggesting? What are our options? I think I understand the concept of this is already in the budget and, in the proposed budget, and there's going to be some upcoming information coming out of a consultant that might change our approach going forward. But you've asked us, you know, what, I guess there wasn't really a question in that. It just said fleet fund fund balance true-up proposal. So is, are there any options being presented, or is this more informational?
The question posed is, should be, does the council support this, this true-up? So the option is, we could do this true-up in 2021, which would set us up for a good starting point for the end of 2022, through 2022. Then we could conduct a study for a methodology moving forward. Another alternative is, we could hold on making this adjustment until 2022, as that study moves forward. But there is the possibility that should we not do this true-up, that within the fund balance, non-general fund contributions could be supporting general fund activity. Specifically, the utility contributions could be supporting general fund activity in the fleet fund.
Okay. And we obviously don't want cross-fund, you know, complication. Okay. And we obviously don't want cross-fund, you know, complication there. Is is there any other approach that doesn't cause us a situation where we run into that risk?
Based on our analysis of the of the current fleet fund fund balance, and what colors of money currently make up that fund, along with what is proposed, or what is still anticipated for the remainder of this year, and what is proposed for 2022, should we not do this true-up, we will run into that issue at least midway through 2022. But I also see Administrator Bogwitz to turn off the camera.
Yep. Go ahead, Administrator Bogwitz.
Thank you. As we worked on the budget this year, actually, it was during the course of the summer, this issue of looking at the fleet fund came up, and we really had to decide when was a good time to raise the issue with you. We thought about raising it this summer. We thought that it was too much else going on in the city that we would perhaps don't wait for the budget process. We also thought about just leaving it for next year. But as we looked at fund balance, we knew that this money would be needed for a true-up at some point. And so our recommendation this evening is to move forward with that adjustment now, knowing that however we study this, that money is going to be needed. I think the question for the council is, are you comfortable with this general approach? If not, we'll come back to you at the beginning of the year and have this discussion again. We would leave the money in fund balance. It would still remain available. We were just trying to use this window of time in this budget process to raise the issue, try to allocate the fund balance at this point, and then continue working on the process. So I think Councilmember Walsh, as you're looking at options, there are options as to when the council may wish to address this. Our recommendation this evening is to allocate the fund balance as a step, a first step, then spend the first part of next year with the additional steps, and hopefully be done by mid-year next year with a better plan moving forward. But if the council would like to just put all this off until the first part of next year, we can come back and talk further. We can move forward with the study. We could have updates on the study, I think, as we get into first quarter of '22. Those are all options. But the but the proposed path that we're suggesting this evening is to go ahead and allocate the fund balance at this point.
So let me see if I can just ask a follow-up, so that I understand this a little bit better. So let's say we go and allocate these funds, and we say, yes, we want to talk about this in the future. And with a consultant's, you know, analysis of this, and we create a policy around it, and at some point in the future, in 2022, we recognize that maybe one fund has overfunded, this another fund has underfunded. Is the concept that then for the 2023 budget, we would be seeing adjustments of either one fund spending contributing more and another? I'm seeing a shaking head. I love it when you do that, Susie. It just it validates me so much. Okay, so I don't know that I'm seeing a lot of options here, and I'll let my other council members kind of contribute on their own. But from my perspective, this doesn't seem like a huge policy question, more of a, hey, this is going forward, an area that we're going to need to talk about. Thanks.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Chris Ray. I may have a really simple question. The $2.2 million, I think that was the number involved in the the true-up, $2.1 and a half million involved in the true-up. Is that for operating costs, or is that for capital, or is that sum of each?
Thank you for the question. It is sum of each.
I wish you'd just said it was operating, because that would have been cleaner. So with then I have my follow-up question, which is, then the capital, do we not manage the ca- so let's say parks need a new truck versus public works needs a new truck. How do we how do we manage the fund within the streams and colors of money? Because it's it's the fleet fund, right? So how are you tracking the expenditures? Because I can understand the operating, where I got an allocation formula, fine and dandy. But when I have an actual expenditure for a capital investment, how do we track those? And and if we don't true it up, does parks not get a truck this year?
Thank you for that question. It is exactly one of the issues that we had as we were trying to figure out these colors of money in the past. So this was really one of the limitations of our last charted account, is we didn't have the ability to track those expenditures against who whose vehicle it actually was. So the new charted account gives us that ability, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, within the fleet fund, to make sure that the appropriate revenue, the appropriate contributions are supporting the appropriate expenditures, both on the operating and the capital side. But the slight complexity on the capital side is, these contributions for the capital side should be set at a at a rate that allows for future acquisition. So it should be set at a fairly flat amount every year. So there's some predictability when you may have a year where there are a lot of parks vehicles, and a year where there are no parks vehicles. So it just means that there won't have to be a large general fund contribution for the parks vehicles in one year, but no contribution in another. So this is really, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's so it provides a smoothing effect, I guess, almost like a risk pool would do for an insurance. So I need three trucks this year, but I won't need another one for next three years. But Public Works will need one, and Streets will need one. So we can we can track it. But it almost feels to me like we are we're pouring three colors of dye into this pot, and then we're trying to parse out the three streams of dyed water when we we when we spend it. So yeah, no, no, I mean, it makes sense to true it up, but it's a complex situation where you have three inputs and three outputs that need to be discreet as they go in and discreet as they go out.
City Administrator Bogwitz?
Of course, I want to make it even more complicated, in that not every vehicle is equal, and that, you know, some vehicles we purchase are extraordinarily expensive, but we do it in a in a, you know, a longer term interval. And then you have the competition within funds, water, sewer, all of that's pretty straightforward. The general fund can be dog-eat-dog sometimes. And so I think what we want to try to do with the the study is also address some of those issues within the the fund, within the different classes of vehicles. That's all part of it, too. I think at the end of the day, we have a better-funded fleet fund, but it's extraordinarily complicated, given the different lines of business that we're in, and that we also still finance fire vehicles, despite the fact that we don't provide operational pieces for that. So every community I've ever worked in has done this for the medium, because of the competition that you have at the fund level. And so I think what you're hearing from the finance staff is that we are in good company with this. But I think we have an opportunity, with a healthy fund balance, to put some money aside to help the financial piece of this, and then the methodology, operational pieces, we can we can cover next year. So I think this is a good news story, because in most communities, you don't have that corpus of dollars. You may fix the methodology, you may fix the processes, but you're still in the deficit. And then how do you make up that deficit? I think we're doing this the right way, which is, let's focus on the deficit. At the same time, we're focusing on the methodology and solve both at the same time. And that puts us in a pretty select group of communities that are able to do both simultaneously.
Councilmembers, we have other questions on this subtopic? I am not seeing any. So, Susie and Autumn, please proceed.
Great. Next up is discussion on funds hit hardest by the pandemic. So the city's special revenue funds hit hardest by the pandemic. We received a few questions around that. The hardest hit were our municipal arts fund and the lodging tax fund. And so starting with municipal arts fund, which is heavily supported by admission tax, it saw a significant drop in revenues during the pandemic as theaters closed. Recognizing this impact, administration very swiftly and quickly reduced anticipated expenditures both for 2020 and 2021, and utilized a healthy fund balance. The 2022 proposed budget further restores some art fund activities, although it's not back to pre-pandemic levels. As we've done this, we've greatly reduced our margins. So for the 2022 proposed budget, the anticipated ending fund balance would be eighteen percent of expenditures. And just as a note, our city's financial policy sets that target threshold every replenishment at fifteen percent and below for special revenue funds. Knowing this budget for 2022, however, it is critical that we monitor admission tax revenues carefully next year to see how theaters recover from the pandemic. And I know that Susie and our arts team and everyone else is is watching for the next batch of revenues to come in every quarter, to see how how those revenues are doing. If theaters don't recover, we will likely need to to consider newer additional revenues for this fund to maintain its levels of service.
Autumn, we have a question from Councilmember De Michelle.
Sure.
Hi, this is more of a clarification. And I was trying to find the statement, but somewhere in the materials you sent to us, it said that most, most of the revenue for the municipal art fund came from ticket sales. So I believe that would be the Village Theater, the theater in the Highlands, and then the new theater that's potentially opening on Sunset. Are there other revenue sources for that fund that I'm not aware of, or I'm not counting right now?
I don't believe that admission tax includes Village Theater. It's just the movie theater. And then the additional movie theater that'll open later this year. In addition, correct me if I'm wrong, Susie, but there's also just grant revenue as well that goes into the arts fund.
Grant grant revenues, is that what you, okay. All right. Yeah, I'll have a comment later under the comments, that I just wanted to be sure that I was counting the right ticket sales. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. And so Councilmember De Michelle, this question, I know that you posed this question earlier, and so this was some more information to follow up on that. And yes, this is our our proposed budget for this year, but there's been some questions around, you know, allocating some other funds for the fund balance as an option and policy question for council this year.
I have a clarifying question to follow up on, Councilmember De Michelle, about the sources of funds, the sources of the municipal arts fund. And I may not have it exactly straight, but I thought certain capital projects also had an arts component, some percentage, some small percentage, but it allows us to incorporate art into specific projects?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. You're correct. That's also another revenue source for the arts fund.
Okay. I don't see any other questions right now. So continue, please.
All right, great. And so the other fund is lodging tax fund. It's a little different than municipal arts fund. So it maintained a healthy fund balance during the pandemic, despite dropping revenues. So for the 2022 proposed budget, the anticipated ending fund balance for this fund would be sixty-four percent of expenditures. So it's still doing well. And in addition, the proposed budget follows all tax recommendations for expenditures this year. So a bit of a different story than the municipal arts fund. So those are the details that we had. I'll pause here just on kind of the status of both of those funds, and are here to answer any other questions.
Any other questions before we move on to the next subtopic? I'm not seeing any, so go ahead, please.
Great. So lastly, the one-time investment fund proposal. So during your last study session, city council expressed interest in using this 1.25 million from the one-time investment fund to support staff who worked during the pandemic, provide options for the capital finance committee task forces, future planning, and finding opportunities that would not be ARPA-eligible. And so administration's recommendation includes using $300,000 from the one-time investment fund to support employees who served our community during the pandemic. More time is needed for us to develop a program that both meets the city's needs and also meets state requirements. So administration is is doing some further research, and plans to return to the city council before the end of the year with a full proposal and policy for your consideration on how to best fund these funds. Meanwhile, administration's also recommending paying off the Burisma debt. So this could be a really great final chapter to such a bold and innovative plan to successfully preserve such amazing open space in our community. This also frees up debt capacity for future capital investments, as the task force considers its options. So we could pay off the full 3.85 million by using some funds from this one-time investment fund, as well as using some undesigned ending fund balance. And that includes the Burisma grant revenue, along with, you know, the fact it was more than anticipated, as Susie covered earlier in the presentation. Paying off this debt would free up resulting capacity for new borrowing for up to 16.1 million for the capital finance committee task force to consider for future capital projects. And just to note, that assumes the this year's annual debt service of 1.75 million. In addition, I also wanted to note that paying off existing debt is well-known as not an eligible use of ARPA funds. So that is very clear. Next slide, please. So this recommendation includes using additional general fund fund balance to pay off that debt. So that would bring our total undesigned ending fund balance to 10.3 million, which amazingly matched the 2021 adopted budget. Susie and I were laughing about that, that it's it's exact, which brings us to sixteen percent of expenditures. As Susie alluded to, I think we're currently at 21. So it brings us down to our our target in our financial policy. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Questions on this, looks like our last subtopic? Council President Hunt?
Thanks. So I have a question about the both the, there's a statement in our packet about the amount of interest funding that is saved by paying off the Burisma debt earlier. And then there's also the additional debt capacity, which he says about 16 million. So I'm wondering, what, is that directly proportional to the one-time funding versus the Burisma grant? Because the Burisma grant is already the bigger proportion of that, and we're already using that for paying off this debt.
Right now, we're
So the question is, how much of that savings is actually the one-time fund specifically?
So we can, we can ask our bond advisors to do, to run some some different scenarios on if we were to only use the one-time investment funds to pay off debt. Currently, the Burisma grant money and the revenues that we received is not slated to pay down the debt in our proposed budget.
But the Burisma grant money is going towards Burisma in any event. So I guess it would be useful for me to know, because we're considering as a policy question, what to do with the one-time funds, it would be useful to parse that out to know what we're actually getting if we pay off using the one-time funds, if we put that towards the the Burisma. Yeah.
Okay. So looking at one option of just using the funds from the Burisma grant to pay down a portion of the debt, and then what the additional would be if we were to include the undesigned fund balance and the one-time investment fund?
Yes. And and the reason for the question is because we have a policy decision right now about what to do with this one-time fund. And it seems separate to me than, and and more of a question than the Burisma grant. And so I would like to know what's the what's the benefit in terms of interest saved, and also the capacity that we would get from that particular part of the paying off of the debt. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Councilmember Walsh. I had a similar question, and I thought I was understanding until I heard you say that the Burisma grant money is not planned to be used to pay down debt. So can it, I don't get it.
So so from my understanding, that when we took out the debt, there was a plan to pay it back. But but right now, the money that the revenue received from the Burisma grant is going back into the general fund. And so so there's a policy decision that you could, you could use the 2.7 million from the Burisma grant to pay off a portion of the full debt, which is the 3.85. Or you could allocate more from the one-time investment fund, and a little bit the and a little bit, the $200,000 from the general fund fund balance to pay off the entirety of the debt.
Okay, so, eh, are you saying that the, in the original budget that we received, the 2.7 million was not proposed to pay down debt? But this new administration proposal, it is as well as funds from this one-time investment fund, which is really just a catch-all of money that hasn't been allocated anywhere. And 200,000 from the general fund. So there's three, technically three, but really just two sources. So I think you were saying at the beginning of all of this, how this relates to the undesigned fund balance percentage. So what we're seeing here with the administrative proposal, that increases the amount of expenditures because technically receiving the Burisma grant is revenue, but then spending it on debt is expenditure. And then we're also adding some extra. Okay.
Exactly. And, and we're leveraging some of this additional one-time funds to ensure that we get to that fifteen to twenty percent of undesigned fund balance. And have an opportunity to pay off the full amount of debt, which just opens up a lot more flexibility uh, in the future as we consider debt, uh, for capital needs in the future. And so we saw this as a good caring where we could not only pay off, uh, or use the grant funds to pay off some of the Burisma debt and also just pay it off entirely, uh, just to give us more options for the future.
Okay, so in addition to agreeing with the request for information that Council President Hunt had, I would also like to understand what our undesigned fund balance percentage would be if we only use the 2.7 million Burisma grant to pay off that debt. So we count that as revenue. We also count that as an expenditure. But we don't spend the 950 that was in this one-time investment fund or the 200,000. So I'm trying to understand if we don't spend that amount, what does that take our, what is proposed here as sixteen percent? Does it take it up to nineteen, twenty-one? Um, because I'm, yeah, I'll save my comments, but yeah, thank you.
Sure, that, we can definitely do that.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Chris Ray. Simple question. If we were to retire the Burisma debt, either, uh, the majority of it or in total, what do we anticipate would be our annual savings and interest payments?
The annual, um, oh, I'm sorry. Our, our savings would be, uh, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in total interest savings. And then we'd also reduce our annual debt service, uh, by four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, in 2022 through 2024. And then seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in years 2025 to 2028. So we would also see a, a good cost savings in the near term, uh, as we are working on a plan for capital investments in the future.
Does that cost savings reflect in the budget then too? So we would, we'd have a big expenditure of the three million dollars, whatever it is. And we then also have a reduction in our debt service with that we wouldn't have to pay. So we'd have a reduction in our expenditures also. Is that captured someplace?
Susie, are you able to answer that?
Uh, sure. Sorry, you could probably see me bouncing a little bit in my seat. Um, so, uh, right now, the, this proposal does not anticipate, um, those savings that would come next year in 2022. So one of the options should be pay off is that, is that we could go out for another debt sale. Um, for, uh, likely a capital package. Um, depending on the timing of when we would go out for that sale, that would depend, that, that would determine what sort of annual savings we might get. Um, with that same, the, the intent would be if we go out for that, estimated about sixteen million is what we think we could get. Um, based on the, um, annual debt service that we would free up by paying this off. Um, that it would keep it, that total debt service, the, the councilmanic debt service amount at where they were for 2021.
Right, but if we didn't go out for a new debt package, we would reduce our, uh, amount outstanding by 3.85 million dollars. And so there's some cost savings associated with the not paying debt service on that 3.8 million dollars. And that's, um, I have no idea what our interest rate is, so it, it may not be a huge amount of money, but it is amount of money.
That's correct. Yeah. So the, uh, I believe it was Autumn, it was four hundred and seventy thousand for, um, the first few years of what that debt service savings would be. We, each year, but we, we don't have the annual interest amount that it would save, um, since the, uh, the debt, the principal portions vary depending on the years, the interest would vary along with it. But it's something that we could ask our, 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 our bond advisors, if you'd like.
Yeah, and I think the $400,000 is, or whatever it is, uh, is the right number anyway, because that's the number that we budgeted for debt service. That's the number of debt, amount of debt service we wouldn't have to pay this year and in subsequent years. So that's the, that's the really net, net savings for us. Thanks.
Other questions from council members? Will we go to public comment? Councilmember Walsh?
Thanks, sorry. Uh, I liked the question that Council, uh, Deputy Council President Ray asked. So, um, just to get clarification. It sounds like this proposed budget does not include a decrease in 2022 of the four hundred and some thousand that we wouldn't be paying. So I'll update my request of, hey, when we get the undesigned fund balance, could we include that in both of those sections? Um, both of those assumptions. One is with all three of those dollar amounts, um, used for this, and then another one for if we only use the 2.7. Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, and we do have some slides remaining before we go to public comment, so. Please proceed, and I'll watch for additional questions.
So just as a reminder, as next steps, uh, we will see you again next week to talk through revenues. Uh, and we've got some, um, agenda bills for your consideration on adopting revenues. And, um, our next slide just includes those policy questions again, which we've kind of stepped through and I've taken notes as we go. Um, to recap, as far as some things, um, that we heard was in the future, considering a rolling average for CPD cost recovery calculations. And then we, uh, we will work with our, our bond advisors to, um, to show you a few different scenarios of just using the 2.7 of Burisma grant, uh, versus all of it. And then also those, and those undesigned fund balance, uh, changes that, that, um, Councilmember Walsh requested.
Any other, oh, Councilmember Hall?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hall here. Just a quick question, uh, cause I can't, I couldn't remember if there are already a set of policy questions set for the November ninth budget deliberations, or if that meeting is empty at the moment.
That, that meeting is empty at the moment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, okay. Uh, Administrator Bachwitz?
Yes, uh, members of the council. So just so we're all clear as we move forward, uh, uh, unless there's other questions this evening, we will come back as, uh, uh, Autumn has outlined with those, uh, additional pieces of information. And then we will hope to be concluded with the council's budget deliberations. Is that a correct, um, statement?
Coming back when?
On November nine.
Okay. Council President Hunt?
Uh, thanks. I, I, this is just a process question. I think we haven't yet even, I know some of our questions were kind of comment-like, but I think we haven't even done the policy deliberation on the policy questions yet. So, um, I would expect that there would be the public comment and then there would be those questions. So I just wanted to make, cause the, um, the statement from City Administrator Bob Quitz made it.
I think, I think we were just concluding, making sure that we get all of the information out on the table before we go to public comment. That was gonna be my next thing. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, then, uh, we are now going to have an opportunity for public comment. Um, if there's anybody who is, um, listening to us today, who would like to make a public comment. Um, you can, Tisha, can you, I don't have it in front of me. Can you read off, um, the technical instructions on how to raise your hand, please?
Yes, and actually I see we only have one member of the public on the call and they, um, have dialed in by phone. So if you are interested in making comments, please raise your virtual hand by pressing star three. And I'm not seeing anyone indicating a desire to speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, uh, for this topic, we had, was it four? We had the, um, four topics, the CPD fees, fleet fund, um, balance true-up, funds hardest hit by the pandemic, and the one-time investment fund. And we had, can you put up the policy questions and then we can go through them, please? Somebody? Thank you. So, um, I, I, I think we can, uh, go through and however you, each one of you feels comfortable providing your feedback on the four policy questions. Um, all, you can do it all at once, or you can provide feedback on one and come back to another later. It's up to you. So who would like to go first? Councilmember Hall, I think you were first? Or was it?
Yeah, I think so. Oh.
There's like three of them there, that, three or four of them that are all at eight thirty-four. So let's go to Councilmember Hall.
All right, uh, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall, and I'll just go through, um, each of the four real quickly then, if that, if that works for the rest of the council.
Yes.
Um, uh, first, I just wanted to say thank you, um, for circulating this memo earlier today before the meeting. Uh, it was good to get some more information, um, ahead of the meeting about, um, the four, uh, topics. Um, so thank you. Uh, so I guess starting with CPD fees and cost recovery, um, you know, we heard we're meant to reach that eighty percent target on average year over year. So since we recently just adopted that target, I think we need some more time to better understand if a change in our cost recovery model is, is needed. Um, but I certainly appreciate the administration bringing forward this as kind of an FYI and a prelude to potential future conversations. Um, and I agree with, I think it was Council President Hunt's early proposal regarding our financial management policies. And also, um, that moving to a two-year budget cycle could potentially help remedy this issue. So I don't think there's any, um, action, immediate action there needed. Um, for fleet fund, fund balance true-up, um, I support this one-time true-up to get us through, uh, 2022. I agree it's important to prevent utility fund contributions from supporting, uh, general fund activities. And I don't really see any other options, uh, for us tonight, other than this true-up that would help prevent that. Um, and then also this long-term study to prevent the need for additional, uh, troops in the future, I think is a good idea too. So I support that as well. Um, municipal arts fund and lodging tax fund. Uh, I would advocate that we wait and monitor these fund balances, uh, into the new year. I think with the municipal arts fund, it was at eighteen, yeah, eighteen percent, which is above our fifteen percent replenishment threshold, just barely, but it's above it. And I think there were a number of box office hits this fall, both in theaters now and, and upcoming during the holidays. So I think that it's likely that we'd see increases in revenues there. So I think, um, I would advocate that we do wait and see there. And then for the, uh, lodging tax fund, it's at sixty-four percent, which is well above the fifteen percent threshold. So I think we're good there. Um, the one-time investment fund. I, uh, love this strategy. I love everything about it. Um, when I read this memo, I did a little happy dance. Um, though I would like to see, uh, an answer to, uh, Council President Hunt's question about better understanding the individual impact of those one-time investment fund monies on the new borrowing capacity number. And then also, uh, I thought Councilmember Walsh had a really good question too about that impact of that action on our undesigned fund balance, uh, as a percentage of expenditures. So if we could get that information, uh, then November ninth meeting, that would be great. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. This is Chris Ray. Um, on CB, CPD fees, um, I am in agreement that this, on a, on a weighted run, rolling average, eighty percent is a great target. Um, moving to a biennial, biennial budget will help, um, smooth out some of these peaks and valleys. And I agree, we need to update our financial policies in a number of ways to reflect that. Um, I think we are fortunate to be in a position to true up the fleet fund right now, and I think we absolutely have to do it. Um, if we don't do it now, it's just gonna, you know, kick the can down the road and it's gonna get worse. So I think that's a great idea. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Hall on the, the funds hit hardest by the pandemic. Let's wait, wait and see how they, uh, how they fare in the first part next year. And if it looks like we're running into problems, we can probably do a budget amendment at that time. And then I have two minds on the one-time investment fund. My, my first mind is, um, I like the idea of paying off the Burisma debt. Because one of our biggest challenges is around capital funding. If that buys us more capacity, that's good and also reduces our, our annual expenditure. Um, but my second mind is a little bit, uh, odder. And it is, you know, we are overrunning our utility tax revenue substantially. And could we contemplate a reduction in our utility tax rate? Um, I remember last time when we raised the utility tax rate, we had a lot of conversation about that. It's not often we get an opportunity to say, hey, uh, for the time being, we don't need to have the tax rate that high. And then I'd also like to revisit whether or not we need to take the one percent property tax increase this year. As opposed to doing this unallocated or undesigned fee, uh, that we're trying to figure out how to spend. Maybe we should just leave the money with the property taxpayers of Issaquah and, uh, bank our one percent. So I would like to see what the impact of not taking our one percent tax increase, um, this year, given the strength of other aspects of our revenue picture. And see what that does to us. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Um, on the CPD fees, um, I like the approach of, uh, of, uh, keeping as close as we can to the eighty percent, uh, target that we've set. And, uh, so I, I like that approach. Um, Susie worked a, a true miracle tonight because I think I understood what the fleet fund true-up was by the time she got done with her presentation. And, uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, Councilmember Ray, I, I, let's do it now. And, and, uh, I think, uh, that just gives a lot more integrity to the numbers that we're using going into the future. So, um, but, uh, yeah, I came into the meeting quite confused and Susie straightened me out very, very well. So the municipal arts fund, um, uh, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this. I, I do support the idea of making that fund whole. But, um, this whole discussion has raised bigger issues for me. Um, and the reason I ask, uh, where those ticket sales were coming from. I was actually in Issaquah when the council first created the municipal arts fund. And I believe at that time we had one theater in town. Um, now we have one theater that's operating. Um, it's a much bigger theater than the old theater was, but it's still one theater. And so, um, I am, uh, wrestling with the question that I don't think I articulated very well before, but I think it's coming to this question. Are the funds that we are collecting for the municipal arts fund sufficient to pay for the arts program that we need today in 2021? Um, we're still reliant on the same sources of revenue. We're still reliant on one or two theaters. Um, and the grant funding that comes in, um, and the arts, uh, our arts director, Abby Dukes, and, and our arts commission has been absolutely brilliant sometimes at utilizing that money and making it stretch. But, um, we're a much bigger city now. And what is the arts program that we we're a much bigger city now, and what is the arts program that we need to serve the size of the city that we are now? And are the sources that we're using for the revenue to pay for that program sufficient? Or do we need to start thinking about other revenues? Or do we need to think about other ways to pay for what we would like to see? So that's a much bigger issue, it's probably one that needs to be wrestled with over a period of time, and maybe the arts commission needs to start thinking about that, or we need to think about how to get that discussion going, but I don't think that for the long term, we're going to be able to rely on ticket sales to pay for an arts program that really serves the whole of our community, especially as it grows. So that's, those are my comments regarding the municipal arts fund. And for LTAC, I, I don't have any relevant comments, really. I think, I think that those funds are sufficient for LTAC right now, but I, I don't feel like I have enough information to really comment. For the last item, the one-time investment, I really love the idea of paying off the Bergsma debt, but I would defer to my fellow council members, I would like to have some of the questions that they raised answered and know more about it before a final decision is made. So thank you very much for, for my time, thanks.
Thank you, council president Hunt.
Thanks. Okay, so in order CPD fees, I think it's just sort of averaging issue, so I think, I think that's fine. Then, does the council support the proposed fleet, fleet month true-up? Yes. I support doing it now. I also would like to flag that as part of the best practices for twenty twenty-two, I am very supportive of looking at electrification of the fleet and decarbonization of the fleet. I know that was in, in, an option, and I'm supportive of that. Then for the funds hardest hit by pandemic losses, I support making the municipal arts fund whole. I recall that even before the pandemic, there were years where I had asked the question about, is this ticket sales really a, is this the right amount of money to be supporting the arts, and is this, you know, this fluctuated even before this year, and I think we should relook at how we, how we're dependent on that for the municipal arts, but it seems very low, and it seems very important that we fund arts right now, so I support making that one whole. LTAC, I think, is in a different position, and I think it's okay to wait that one out and see. And then for the one-time funds, I've been listening to my fellow councilmember comments. Appreciate all the comments. I, I feel that if we have additional one-time funds, they should go towards something in our strategic plan. We have a lot of things we want to do in the strategic plan, and we are halfway through, and there are a lot of items remaining, so I'm not convinced that this, you know, it's, we, we save four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in total interest costs by paying off this debt early. I think probably my, I, we're, we'll get information on this, but if it's about one-fourth of the, paying off the debt that's the one-time funds, you know, that's, that's not, I think, I think it is compelling to me to use the Bergsma grants to pay off the debt, because the Bergsma grant was for Bergsma, and so that makes perfect sense. But for the one-time investment fund, I, I think we have a long list of strategic plan items, and if we pay off debts over time, that allows us to continue making investments in our strategic plan as well. So that would be my preference. I'm interested to hear back about the specific benefit of using that for this, paying off the debt. But I, as I said last time, I think we have a lot of things in the strategic plan. I also think this budget overall does not allocate very much to environmental stewardship. Compared to other strategic plan areas, it's a very low percentage, and I think if we don't put money aside for land acquisition right now, which is one of our strategic plan actions, that land will get more expensive as well, and so there's, there's no better time to do it. And it would save us money too, and I think it might end up saving us more money than, than paying off the Bergsma debt earlier with this fraction of that. So I think it's a meaningful amount to put towards open space acquisition, I think that aligns with our strategic plan. I think if we continue to have higher revenues than expected, we could then maybe mid-year pay off more debt if we wanted to, but generally, I think paying off debt over time is, is a sound financial policy, and if we have additional revenues, I think we should be looking to the strategic plan for how we spend them. That said, the, the part of this that does make sense is that, to me, like without any additional information, is using the Bergsma grants to, to pay off part of the Bergsma debt. So those are, those are my comments. I think this would be a meaningful amount of money to put towards open space acquisition for a fund.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is councilmember Walsh. So going through the list, I appreciate the additional details on the CPD cost recovery rate, feel like it's fine as is, and support the general idea of updating the financial policy to look at and a two-year cost recovery average. For the fleet fund, I really appreciate the additional details. I don't want to create a situation where we have the utility fund cross-pollination within that, so I do support doing a true-up for this year, and definitely support a future conversation about our policy around that. So I don't really have a strong opinion about when that conversation happens, so I'll just look to the administration to schedule it as needed. The funds hit hardest by the pandemic losses, I generally feel since they fit within the financial policy before adding additional money, that it's fine as is. But for any future conversation about that arts, arts fund, I generally ask for information about how other cities handle arts funding. Do they have a specific arts fund with its own financing and revenue source, or do they do it as just a portion of their general fund and general expenditures? How that's done would be helpful because having an arts fund with its own revenue and own expenditures, to me, seems kind of out of line with what we do for many of our other funding needs for the city, so I'm not sure whether that's a standard practice across it all, or something we do that's unique. And then this final concept of the one point two five million one-time investment fund. So first of all, something that I don't think anybody's touched on at this point, I do generally support the idea of providing a bonus for the employees who've been onsite during the pandemic. But I think this is coming pretty late in the process, we're lacking a lot of information here, no concept of what the kind of three hundred thousand that's listed here would provide to each of the employees, whether that's a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. So I would need that information before being able to support that, and I'm sure the finance staff is working on that. For using funds to pay off early debt payments, so I think I do support the two point seven million of Bergsma, Bergsma grant dollars toward this amount. I think that's a compelling use for that. It clearly delineates or clearly aligns the dollars received with saving our residents' money on additional debt amounts. As for using the general fund dollars on early debt payment, I just don't see a necessarily a compelling case for that here. I think in any particular year, at any point in time, we could sit here as a council and say, before we spend any money on operations or capital expenditures, we should always pay down our debt payments in order to save the most amount of money. But that's not something we do as a councillor, we've done in the past, because we understand that making payments toward debt amounts allow us to finance larger purchases. And it's, I think, generally a good use of our funds in order to make some of those larger purchases and then pay that back over time for the people who are going to use the benefit of that capital project. And so I would say, in this case, I, I think generally what we've done in the past, instead of each budget cycle, looking at that and saying we should pay down more of our debt amounts, we've looked at it and said, we have a strategic plan, we have a capital improvement plan, where we have certain needs for the city that we don't have a funding source for. So I think looking at this one point one five million dollars rather than using it for early debt repayment, I think we should look to what we traditionally have done, which is capital projects, strategic plan priorities, and things like that. And I think what I have been saying from the beginning on this one-time investment fund is I would really appreciate the administration providing some options, because it's very difficult as a council for us to sit here and say, we have a hundred items on our capital improvement plan that don't have any funding source. Which ones fit within that dollar amount? I would really appreciate some recommendations for things that we could spend that money on that benefit the needs of our community, because we have a lot of items that no longer, that don't have any funding sources, and I think that's the best use of this fund, so, thank you.
Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, councilmember Goodman. Short answers are eighty percent yes, whole no. Long answers, the CPD, sure, eighty percent targets look good, like getting, getting closer to that. Fleet fund, yep, true it up, hardest hit funds. Arts, arts are, my way of thinking, one of the ways that we are a real city and not just what we, a term that we used to use that aren't even supposed to use anymore, suburb, right? We're a real city and our art scene is part of that. Wouldn't it be amazing if we had like some kind of, well, I don't know, a subcommittee that one of its responsibilities was overseeing arts? So that the council could have a regular touch on what's going on with our arts funding and what's going on with the art scene. I look forward to the conversation that I believe will be coming about whether we want to move back to a subcommittee model, because I think you could, if you were to list out a dozen areas in which we have suffered or been diminished in our ability to project policy, arts policy is one of the areas that has suffered from the lack of subcommittees. So I, you know, I think all the questions everybody said here tonight, we need to think about how we do arts, but it's gonna take money, and we should spend it, arts are important, and it doesn't, arts are different because it's not, you know, there's, you know, you get housing, you get businesses, you don't automatically get arts unless you actively try to build an art scene in your town. The one-time investment, I don't think we should come up with another million out of general funds right this minute. To me, it's kind of like, this question is like paying down your mortgage. When you could pay down your credit cards, you could make other investments, your mortgage is a pretty pretty safe place to, to let accrue. This gets to the question of net present value of other investment options. I'm not sure all of our investment object, options would fit in a net present value model, but it's one way to think about it. I certainly think the Bergsma grant could be used for Bergsma debt, all for it. I did like council deputy president Ray's suggestion to consider, one option to consider is lowering the utility tax rate, how weird would it be to actually lower a tax for once? However, having said that, I disagree with the talk of not foregoing the one percent tax increase, property tax, because utility taxes are sort of like retail or a sales tax, regressive, regressive, regressive. One of the few places on the spectrum between aggressive and progressive taxes, one of the few tax levers that we have that is pegging the meter, it's progressive end of the spectrum, is the one percent property tax, so. And I hate that the, the best kind of tax that we have in terms of progressivity is a thing where every year we have to decide whether to take it or not take it. You know, we don't do that with sales tax, we don't do that with all these other taxes, but we have to, if they go on camera and say, you know, we want your money. I, I'm, I'm glad when we moved, I was on council when we moved to starting to take the one percent, and I would happily defend the argument about why that's a, that's a good place if you're gonna get revenues compared to some of our other revenues, so let's keep it. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. So I think typically the chair goes last. So not sure if I should, I know we have, councilmember Hall has a second round comment. If I should wait until we're done with the second round comments before I make my comments, not sure how I should handle that.
Well, councilmember Goodman, this is councilmember Hall, I was just gonna make a, an additional comment on the one-time investment fund money, so if you would rather kind of go through everything before I do that, I think that's okay.
Go ahead, you can supplement your comments.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to make a second round comment. I just wanted to quickly speak to why at this important time I support this one-time investment fund proposal, and why I think paying down debt quicker than usual is actually smart in this case. You know, the last page of the strategic plan includes a flow chart for how to make decisions on potential actions, and the first question is, is this is specific action called out in the plan, but the second question is, is this a timely opportunity? And I would argue that we actually do have a very timely opportunity with the work of the Capital Finance Community Task Force, and those recommendations are in process on the way, and they're gonna need money. I think it's a timely opportunity to, you know, we, we keep talking about build back better a little bit in, when it comes to ARPA and this budget process, and I think it's an opportunity to really move the needle on a lot of our capital needs, which have been listed as priorities by the community many times. So I think that the answers to the questions that we've heard about that specific policy question on November ninth will help shed light on a better discussion for us all to have in council, but I just wanted to make sure that was on everyone's mind about why, you know, it, it really is a timely opportunity to move that way if we wanted to as a council, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make comments, and then if anybody has any other comments after that, that's fine. For members one and two, the CPD fees and the fleet fund true-up, I don't have any different comments than anybody else has made in terms of the the, the funds hit hardest and whether we should make them whole or wait them out. I would wait them out. One of the questions, thoughts, things that we were asked to think about at, in, as part of the capital financing tax task force is that rather than think of things as whether they're important or not, think of things not, not whether they're not important, but what what's, what is a priority? Not that they're not important, but what is a priority? And I would say that the waiting these out does not signify that it's not important. I just think that there are other things that are a priority right now. I also don't think of the municipal arts fund as something that's a if we did want to think of a different way to fund it or make it whole later, that is at a giant leap, it's not millions of dollars. I don't think that that's an insurmountable thing to think about. I also don't think that that we're still in the middle of, but hopefully latter stages of a pandemic, that there's a reason to panic about the arts fund now. So I would take a wait-and-see approach. The one-time investment fund, I The one-time investment fund, I am thinking about this a little differently. You know, we have for the past year and a half, thought of a lot of ways that we can make differences in nibbling on, nibbling about things. And I know we've done some bigger nibbles, so I'm not suggesting we haven't done some significant things. But what if we had an idea that we would do something big for the entire community? That we came out of the pandemic with a plan that would give something big to our entire community that we were, that we thought higher than just a few hundred thousand dollars here and there. I think we have an opportunity to use the suggested debt strategy for the debt payoff to create significant capacity. And, you know, we do have a lot of capital needs. One of them is, for example, we have a Tibbetts Valley Park that is in great need of an overhaul, just like Lake Somamish State Park needed it badly when I first got on council in 2011. And I would say the time has come for us to think about picking a big project and doing something giant for our community and think higher than just a few hundred thousand here and a few hundred thousand there. And so I would ask the administration to come back with an option that gives us some ideas on how we could pick something large like Tibbetts Valley Park and how we could, how we could pay off the debt that is in the package tonight. And then how we could do something big like maybe finish the master plan for that park. And I mean, it's a $15 million project. Let's get started. Let's come up with a plan for our, our community and let's think bigger, let's think higher. Let's think about the entire community. So we have some money and we also have a capital financing task force. And I would like to think as higher. I know Council President Hunt mentioned taking the money and buying some open space. We have a lot of open space. We have a lot of trails. We have a lot of passive areas. And we've done a great job of that. Let's take some of the active areas we have, maybe specifically Tibbetts Valley Park. And let's do something huge and meaningful. Let's get that done. Let's think about something big like that. That's my feedback. Do we have other comments from other council members? Second round. I'm not seeing any. I'll wait a couple more seconds, shuffle some papers. And if not, then the next item on the agenda is, do you want to sum, does somebody want to summarize what you heard from us? In addition to what you already summarized before, perhaps?
Sure, Councilmember Goodman, I can attempt. It's, it sounds like we have fairly large consensus around the first three items. So considering the rolling averages for CPD cost recovery calculations, supporting the fleet fund true up, taking a wait and see approach on the special revenue funds, knowing that we'll be doing larger analysis on the needs of the arts community and revenues to best support them. And also working on doing some research on how other cities handle arts funding in the future. And then we owe you some more information around some different scenarios. Specifically if we were to only use the Burghsma grant money to pay off a portion of the debt and then how, some recommendations on how the rest of that money could be spent.
Any comments on anything that was missed? Don't see any. All right. Well, thank you to Autumn and Suzie for the information that you provided. And that will finish that item. And then the last item on the agenda is a good of the order. Does anybody have anything for good of the order? No? All right. Well, everybody have a great evening. We are adjourned. Thank you.